The Pullman City Council meeting for this Tuesday, December 17th, our last meeting of the year. With that, Dee, would you please take a roll?
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Records.
Here.
Councilmember Sorensen.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Under announcements tonight to facilitate city cleanup, Colling Hill Street parking prohibition will be in effect right now all the way through January 10th from 2 until 9:00 a.m. It fails on the city website. Again, with our Pullman Moscow original airport with a fifth flight, parking is a challenge, so we want to make sure that you find other ways. There is parking there, but we also would like to see if you could have me drop off at the airport. That would also help as well. And we have our websites up and running, so Mike Erland, give us an update on that.
Thank you, Mayor. I just did want to let the council and the community know that the new website is up and running. As the mayor said, it's the same URL, pullman-wa.gov. So it went live today, it's still propagating through many of the different iterations of it online. So we're considering this kind of a soft opening, because what we're really trying to do is actively solicit information from our community members to help improve the site now and in the future for useful, timely, and accessible information. So there's links all over that. If you're looking for something you can't find, don't struggle with it too much, let our staff know and we'll try to make that more front and center and prominent. So just a big thank you to IT and all the different departments that loan people out to IT to get their department pages up and running. It was a Herculean effort, but we're glad we got it done in 2019.
They also tried to launch a new, and they did, launch a new phone system at the same time when they're doing everything else. They did an excellent job.
Confidence is strong in the website. We'll talk about the phone system later.
We're going to hear from our commander Jake Opkenorth in just a moment here, but we'll remind you that Pullman Winter Market is coming back to the Grouseford WSU Visitor Center. Market dates will be every third Saturday through April. First one will be this winter, December 21st, from 10 till 2:00 a.m. And I asked Jake if he would tell us and talk a little bit about the pedestrian emphasis that we've been doing here with our police department. Some of you may have wrote a story that was in the paper this morning about it, but we want to make sure that our pedestrians are safe.
Thank you. So I'm Jake Opkenorth, I'm with the police department. So just recently, we've seen kind of an uptick in the amount of, or the number of pedestrian accidents we've seen. It's not, as far as statistics go, a large increase. It's pretty comparable to years in the past, except for we saw like four in one week. So we decided we needed to try and be a little proactive in, I guess, what we can do to prevent any more pedestrian accidents. So we're kind of taking a three-prong approach, education, enforcement, and engineering. So we've worked with our local media, and we're trying to get the word out to slow down, to watch for pedestrians in the crosswalks, and kind of combine that with enforcement to get the word out that not only do we want people to drive safer, but we're watching, we're actively looking. We actually sent officers out yesterday in plainclothes with patrol officers, keep an eye on them, and I think we made six traffic stops in one hour for people that didn't yield to the officers in the crosswalks and issued one infraction. So we're going to continue that effort. In addition, the engineering aspect of it, we're trying to make sure that we take notes on anything that we as officers see as maybe a suggestion that we can pass on to our engineering department as things to consider, whether it's lighting, better marking in crosswalks, flags for different crosswalks. So we're kind of taking that three-prong approach. We know it's a little bit slower as students get back in, we're going to continue, and we're going to also focus on pedestrians and making sure pedestrians are using crosswalks properly. I know up in some neighborhoods in town, pedestrians just walk whenever they feel like it and in any way they want to, so we're going to also enforce that side of things.
And you're going to encourage pedestrians to wear brighter clothing than dark clothing?
Yes, that was one of our accidents. We had somebody who was hitting the crosswalk, it was night, it was raining, and the pedestrian was wearing all dark clothing. So, you know, pedestrians need to be aware, too.
Yeah, tonight, just when I was going on Grand Avenue, I'm looking both ways for cars and trying to get out, and there was, as I turned, there was a pedestrian standing on the side, but all in dark clothing, and I could hardly even catch their view of it because there wasn't lighting out there. It's very seriously.
Hey Jake, I'm going to kind of put you on the spot here. Just what's sort of your gut feeling with lowering the speed limits, which is getting some talk around the community? Do you think that would help?
Well, I think that what we're seeing so far, the speed limits where the accidents happen is 25. So I don't know if that's something that you want to consider lowering. We had two that were in the downtown area and one up in Greek Row area, all where speed limits are already at 25. So, you know, that might be a consideration.
And the driver was going about 25?
Yeah, or slower.
Or slower.
Yeah. So I don't think speed is necessarily a factor, although it could become a factor as the roads get worse. We need people to slow down and think ahead a little bit.
Is there any chance WSU might join with you and do some emphasis patrol in terms of WSU property when the students come back?
Yeah, I think when the students get back, that's something that we can explore.
Okay. Nathan?
I think also, I know I do this, when I walk my dog, and even though he's all white, you know, I do.
He's a little logo.
Yeah, he's a little logo. He's a big boy. That put reflective tape, whether it's on your coats, I mean, some students may not be able to afford a whole new, another like white coat or something, but reflective tape, I think, if nothing else would really help. I know it's a little.
No, that's good.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much, Jake. Appreciate that, appreciate what the police department's doing as far as pedestrians are concerned. With that, we now have our Ninth District legislators with us tonight. Senator Mark Schessler, Representative Murray Die, Representative Chris Schmidt. Thank you so much for making time. I know you guys have had a real busy day. Mark's already told me that he started with one session early this morning, he's been going all day long. So again, thank you very much for meeting with our council here, and as usual, we'll go to the senator and he can give us an observation of what you see coming up in this legislative session, and I know the council has some things to share with you as well.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I think it's really good that we've, over many years, scheduled the Pullman City Council and Ninth District legislators. We know that that December meeting before Christmas, before session, we book it in our schedules and it's there and we do it, and I think it's been very, very good, and we should obviously continue good. On a personal note, I think the one change that I'm going to do this year, traditionally the majority leader and minority leader don't serve on policy committees. And an addition came up on the Labor and Commerce Committee, and I said, "I'm going to take this mission myself." And it's not the place for wimps, it's a nasty committee, there's a lot of tough issues. But I think the incredible frustration I saw with the City of Pullman being fined by LNI for their rescue attempt last year shows an agency that's clearly out of touch. And I look at the new overtime rules and how we compete with the new federal rules in Idaho, and it's out of touch again. And so I think from that standpoint, I wanted to do this, I kind of wanted to get back on a policy committee, and so I'm going to take a little bit of time away from being caucus leader and go on a committee that has just irritated me for decades.
And you got a choice to do it, too.
You know, sometimes a leader gets to make choices. That's one nice opportunity. And Pullman was one of the stimuluses that Senator Schmidt, Representative Schmidt brought to everybody's attention earlier this year. So that's the personal part. I think you start with the easy part of the session, and that is the supplemental capital budget. Capital budget was pretty generous last year. Locally here, we were able to do some good things in Whitman County.
Yes, and we thank you for that.
And statewide, it was a very generous capital budget overall. After that, we have very little bonding capacity left. So whether you look at 30 million, you look at 70-odd million, that's projected debt limit we have for bonding. So you might move the pieces around, but when one group said, "Well, we're looking at $240 million," I was polite. I didn't laugh, but said it probably wasn't going to happen. Greater Spokane came in, wanted $30 million for their airport, and I said, "Not a chance. We haven't done terminals before, we're probably not going to start when we have no bonding capacity." So expect really just tweaks, that's the easy part. The operating budget, there will always be more asks than there is money, that's a fact. But since we left Olympia, we've garnered $850 million in additional revenue for the current biennium. That gives you a pretty darn healthy margin to do a number of things, and where we go will be the debate. You know, one of the things you look at is, does a taxpayer get a break on something this next year? Is it a free Discover Pass? Is it some tax relief? What might you do? That's one option. One is transportation. With the uncertainty of 9/7/6, would you consider paying state troopers portion that was weight-based out of the general fund? One of the ideas that my caucus is going to be looking at for a long-term, regardless of what happens with 9/7/6, transportation will not go away. So a carefully thought-out plan to shift the sales, state portion of sales tax revenue, not yours, Mayor, from automobiles or automobile-related to transportation. That if 9/7/6 is upheld in the legislature and never does anything, we still have transportation needs. And there's a nexus that people can understand, and the plan we look at would phase it in, and also have a cap on it, that if the economy flattens out, you reduce the rate of growth in funding, and hopefully pay a little more cash and less in bonds, because our state's debt problem is not the capital budget, it's transportation. We've historically overbonded our transportation. And you get to the point where you bond a seven-year grind-and-pave lifespan with a 15-year bond. It doesn't work. So that's one option. I think all of the interests of all of the parties will be right there, looking for a little more. I think we could rattle off the ones that we all have interest in. Those are a few things, but traditionally supplemental budgets weren't about new policies, new agendas, it was crafting something that took the peaks and valleys out of budgeting. So that could be. The third area, of course, is transportation, which could get a little bit wilder. I don't expect that the Supreme Court will have the final say before we leave in March, but I think there's going to be a lot of interest in what transportation might look like if the court were to rule in favor of 9/7/6. And I suspect that there will be a plan to craft what it would look like, and we'll look at those ideas. And it has to be state and local, and that makes it more challenging. I really don't think some of the local issues were really on the ballot, it was a cumulative effect, and it passed, not because the five counties in the Ninth District passed it, it was because there was a tidal wave in Pierce County and Snohomish County over the inaction of reining in sound transit. Had sound transit been reined in, you would not have had an overwhelming tidal wave of votes in those counties. Simple numbers from a statewide race, that's what has to happen eventually, because there could be a simpler initiative, different initiatives, who knows? And I guess kind of to wrap it up, I would say the policy issues that were sort of a drama last year will be doing summer reruns. Will there be an income tax on capital gains? Will there be significant gun control initiatives? Will there be comprehensive sex ed? Whatever. I think we'll see, we'll have a lot of summer reruns with an election year, and with that, I'll quit rambling and turn it over to my House colleagues.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, first of all, coming into town, your main street is so beautiful with the new building and the lights. Oh, it's just, aren't you guys just thrilled about that?
It's going to even be better, too, because we have a good downtown group working right now.
It's just great, and having that new building in the downtown area, during construction, it was so, it was a lot of frustration, and now that it's all complete, it's so rewarding to see that. The runway ribbon cutting was a wild success.
Yes, it was.
And super excited about that, and we have yet to take our maiden voyage onto the new runway, trying to get our little plane in for annual, and I don't know, it's going to be so disorienting trying to land our mosquito on that great. So the year coming up, we're already seeing some of the things that are being proposed this afternoon. I had a conference call with the Women's Commission over a Senate bill regarding incenting more women onto corporate boards, and, you know, it's some of those things where we think we can do more than maybe what our power of cultural change really warrants. So it'll be interesting to hear that debate. There's a whole host of issues similar to that, I think, that we will address in the session going forward. It always, I've been there for four years, and the budget when I came in was somewhere in the neighborhood of $36 billion for the biennium, and we're now at $54 billion, and that took us four years to go from 36 to, I don't think that we're short of taxes. And it amazes me when we arrive how it's this land where people say there's just not enough money and we're going to fall short, there's not going to be enough to operate these programs. And I'm curious to know if there's any way, given that you guys have to work within your means at the city level, if there's any way politically that we can start working to rein in some of these, this perpetual rolling forward of large asks in the budget. You know, I would be curious to know how we can maybe get a little bit of prioritization and not see us continue to grow. We've got the $5 billion in new taxes, you would think that those revenues will start to show some, you know, some surplus at some level, and that there isn't this constant sense that the budget is always in shortfall. And I would really hope that at some point we would see that, and I don't understand why we never quite have enough when we've got so much increase in the short time I've been in office. That's something that, when they talk about taxes going forward, I'm sure that we're going to have every reason why they're unnecessary. It baffles me, it really does. For me, I'm going to be working a lot on natural resource issues. I'm really excited about some of the stuff that I've been working with, fish and wildlife. I've been working on some things for prison reform, and I've been working a lot on water. And so I'm looking forward to seeing how those conversations go in the House. I'm hoping we're successful a little bit in changing some conversations. I know that we're going to be addressing a lot of mental health. I think that a lot of the budget last year went to mental health, and I would like to change the conversation a little bit. We talk about mental health or behavioral health, and that's great for people who have healthy bodies, but we haven't yet talked about traumatic brain injury, brain illness, you know, some, we're not addressing the fact that our brains are an organ just like our heart and our liver, and if we don't start using the correct language, we are not going to get to the correct solutions to help people get well from the injuries and brain illnesses that are common and becoming more common in our society. And so I hope that we can have some changes in our conversation just by talking about that, you know, that the homeless veteran population are largely people who have traumatic brain injuries or close head injuries as a result of exposure to concussive forces repetitively. The women homeless on the street oftentimes are a result of domestic violence, where they've had blows to the head, and then those who are struggling with addiction, not only is the chemicals that they are using causing brain injuries, but also they're subject to falls and also violence on the street, and so also are struggling with brain injuries that need actual medical treatment. And so I hope that we can have those conversations, since we did, in capital budget, fund the new hospital, in teaching hospital at U-Dub. So I'm really looking forward to the conversations that we have coming forward into the session for cities, and Pullman in particular. I still think that tech and some of the conversations surrounding tech is going to be fun.
You've been working hard on 5G, I know that.
I know, I have been, and I really do want to run a bill, it's not really coming together, so it may not make it this year, but on autonomous tractors and being able to move autonomous tractors on the roadways in the Palouse legally. And so to draft the first of the autonomous vehicles on our state roadways bill, and there's a task force that's talking about autonomous vehicles, and they're all thinking in terms of highway traveled speeds, and I'm thinking in terms of something a lot smaller in scope that may be on less traveled, less populated roads, has a good starting place to get autonomous vehicles. And that's one of the things of being able to be in a city or an area, region around the university here, where a lot of those engineering and a lot of the engineering and design is occurring for autonomous and robotics, for agriculture, that we're going to see that as, with the amount of fiber that we have in Whitman County, with the technology being thickened in this area, that hopefully we can get to an autonomous tractor vehicle kind of bill.
I'm sure.
I got five things. First of all, thank you for having us, always appreciate the opportunity to come in and visit with you, answer your questions. We have a new Speaker of the House, after following the longest-serving Speaker of the House in state history. We have no idea what her priorities are going to be, no clue. So we don't know what she's going to want to push forward, what she's going to do, it's a great unknown. She does not have a clear majority in her caucus, so she has to do something that's going to unite her caucus so she can keep her job, and that's to be very blunt, but we don't know what that means, so we'll see. On your LNI issue, after looking into this and doing some research, I found out that once a complaint is made, that there is no other option but to fine. I want to take care of that, I want to change that to give the director ability to override that, in such as the case here in Pullman, which I view is just absolutely egregious. The fact that they go and save people, rescue people safely, they use their heads, make good choices, and then we're going to penalize them for it. So we're going to work on that and take care of that.
Thank you.
We'll see we get it passed. Another issue for our rural areas as a whole is the shortage of EMTs, emergency medical technicians. It is not just here, it's across our whole state, it is across the whole country. So I'm going to have a small incentive bill to try to entice people to stay in, stay involved, and to make sure that when the problem occurs out in the rural area, someone's going to show up. Because I think we're down to that point where there are some areas, even in our district, you make a call, somebody may not come. And I don't think that that's, that's not a quality of life, especially for the rural areas that we can have, and so we're going to have an incentive bill to try to deal with that. I know that your hospital is in good financial condition. That is not the case even across our own district and across the state. I can list you off eight hospitals that are tenuous at best in their financial position. That is a problem, because if you're not be able to offer care and you allow some of these hospitals, and we have one in Palmroy, and frankly, the one in Ritzville, we've got to figure out a way so these, they're needed in these communities, we've got to figure out a way to make it work. And like I said, we have two in our district that we're, we've got, we've got to figure out a different way of doing that. And the last issue I want to talk about a little bit is about mental health, and even though we have a plan, we don't have a workforce. And we have got, and we need it all now, across the board. So we've got a plan, now we've got to figure out how to make that plan work. And that means we've got to have a workforce out there, reimbursement, especially in the Medicaid arena, reimbursement is not adequate. And so these are some of the things that we're going to have to address and continue to address, because it affects every single community out there, and we just have to have it. And so we will continue to work that way and keep working down that pathway till we can get more folks out there. Long-term beds for 90 and 180-day commitments continues to be an issue. The contractors who contract with the county, we had hoped that we would see some of these small businesses step up and want to be the sponsoring agency to, you know, there was capital budget money to build facilities. We haven't seen that. So what we're seeing is that most of the beds are being centered in the urban areas. You talked to our local sheriff here, he doesn't believe, he just wants beds. He will invest the time to get the people to there so they can get treatment. But if, look at Sulton County, if they go to Tri-Cities, it's a two-and-a-half-hour drive, if they, one way, if they go to Spokane, it's a two-hour drive. So basically, they're taking a deputy out of service for half a day if they're going to Spokane, more than that if they're going to Tri-Cities. I would really like, in my way of thinking, I would like to see some regional facilities, if there's enough, I don't want to say business, if there are enough patients there to support that, I still would think that it would be a good solution so that we'd have some regionally placed facilities around the state, because I think it would help everyone in these communities to have those beds easily accessible. I'll stop there, those are my five things.
And you're continuing to serve on the healthcare committee?
It's a sentence, Glenn.
You've been an expert at that. I mean, I've seen you sometimes that you're heading out to testify someplace also because of the experience you've picked up on healthcare, but we appreciate the service you've given.
Well, thank you. Healthcare's an interesting, it's an interesting field.
And constantly changing.
Yes, and we're just trying to make good decisions for our folks all the way across the state, so.
So with that, we have, council has maybe some questions here tonight, and I know that we provided you with our 2000 or 20 legislative priorities. Yes, it's two pages, today we edited this down from three pages, we got it down to two, and yes, we did move fraud a little bit, moved margins a little bit, but there's some items here, and mental health was one of them, so I'm opening up now the council for comments or questions.
I just have a question.
We'll go with.
Joe, when you say on mental health that there is a plan but not a workforce, are you talking about the mental health care providers to implement the plan?
Yeah, I'm talking about psychiatrists, and the difference between psychiatrist and psychologist, psychiatrists can prescribe.
Yeah, you're right.
Talking about doctors that have a background in mental health, ARMPs, PAs, nurses that have a background working with mental health. We're short across the spectrum. And we, I didn't even bring up state hospitals, we still are having problems with assault in the state hospitals. We have got to get past that, because it is not a safe place to work. You and I wouldn't want to work there, I've been there. And we still have issues there, and that we're going to have to deal with.
Still have an accreditation issue, Western.
Well, we're not ever going to get that back, to be very honest. The facilities are just too old there. It was $15 million at the state hospitals to take away ligature. Ligature is anything they could use to hang yourself, like these lights, I could hang myself there, the camera there, so just think about that. The door, you can hang yourself on the door. So any new facility actually has rounded doors to where a rope sheet, whatever they would use, slides off. All the sinks and everything is, are sealed, so you don't have, you know, anything like this. Even, so, and the age of the facilities there, I don't know if you knew this, at the older part of the Western State Hospital, they have fuses. They're about this tall, and they're about this big around. They're no longer manufactured, they literally have to make them. And they have all kinds of power problems, but this is the type of age of facility. So we are considering building a new hospital out there which would meet the certification out there. And, but that, that's a long answer.
No, that's okay, I appreciate it. Keep fighting the good fight for us.
Well, we do need those folks.
Yeah, it's very important, thank you.
Nathan?
Yeah, we're, we're, this is what I hear from people, from residents, both in Pullman and outside of Pullman, is that there's virtually nothing in the way of emergency mental health care. If a family has a family member in crisis, there is so little available to that, to that family. And that, I hear this twice a week from someone who is in, who has had a problem, who is in distress, who has a family member, that is, that has become really top of mind for me.
In fairness, there are not a lot of communities who want those type of crisis facilities in their community. And we are having problems, I'll give you an example. There's a group of brothers who bought out the rest home in Tico, and they've changed it to an assisted living. They have taken most of the discharges out of Eastern State Hospital. They have tried to expand this model in Western Washington, and they have been shut out by the communities because they, "We don't want that in our community." Now, mind you, I've, I've not had one complaint in Tico. And they've been doing this for a number of years now, we've not had any. But citing these facilities in the cities have been a problem. It's a definite NIMBY, you know what a NIMBY is?
Oh, yes.
And we're going to have to figure this out, because we need these type of facilities, these enhanced service facilities, so that care is available. So we need some help on that one.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, a couple of things. First of all, Representative Di, that, your emphasis on autonomous tractors, amazing, awesome. That is something that's a real passion of mine. And also homeless veterans, last year when we had the Pullman Warming Center, on Christmas Eve, we had a homeless veteran who came into there, and I was, I was one of the volunteers along with Pastor Mary Beth Rovetti at the time. And I, he just needed a place to stay, and he had had a traumatic brain injury, and it was really, it was tragic, because his degree was actually from USC. And he had come back up here for his child and trying to get back into WSU. He had been released from, from prison over in Whitman County, but he came in and he had sandals on, walking through on Christmas Eve. But he was able to get shoes and, and food, and I gave him information for veterans housing, because that is something that is sorely, sorely needed around here. So I commend that, and it does talk to the mental health, because he did, you know, he sustained mental health challenges with that. I did also want to, last time you came, I was not prepared to talk about the marijuana impairment information. And so, and so this time, I did, I did bring a short thing, if it's all right with Mr. Mayor, to read. I talked with Dr. Lovrich, it's been going along, so if I can read this. So as you know, I've been working with Dr. Clowers from WSU Chemistry Department, and Nicholas Lovrich for the past two years, collecting data during police training in green labs in Washington. The green labs in Washington are so very unique.
What's a green lab?
It's a marijuana impairment lab, so, as opposed to the wet labs that are usually done for alcohol. And very unique in the entire nation, you know, there's only very few, I think, Washington, and then Mississippi, I believe, was a different, another one. So we, the three of us have teamed up with Dr. Mike Milburn from the University of Massachusetts to collect data on impairment to cognitive and psychomotor skills related to driving and the operation of watercraft resulting from cannabis and alcohol, and the combination of both. Dr. Milburn has a large grant from the Federal Small Business Innovation Research, SBIR program, with funding coming from the National Institute of Drug Addiction to refine his test of impairment, Druid is the name of it. Much of the data for the field testing of Druid has been collected right here in Washington, and this is very, like I said, very unique with our assistance. In addition, Professors David Makin and Dale Willetts, who are involved in the three-year National Institute of Justice grant just completed, put a focus on the use of footage from body-worn cameras to study cannabis and alcohol-involved DUI traffic stops. So this is very unique as well. The Makin-Willetts Lab for Complex Social Interactions at WSU is able to analyze the footage in great detail with marked consistency and precision, and in due course, they will be able to provide excellent guidance in the training of officers in spotting the signs of cannabis impairment. We would very much like to share what we were able to learn with the use of the NIJ funds, a million dollars about cannabis impairment, driving and boating during an appropriate legislative hearing with your, you know, agreement. We would like to explore the potential for setting up also a partnership with WASPIC, Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs, to make it possible for Washington police agencies who are interested in analyzing their body-worn camera data, to provide that camera data to WASPIC, and WASPIC would de-identify the source and transfer it to the WSU lab for analysis. With a modest amount of funding from the state, this partnership could be set up and become a self-sustaining operation as a WSU WASPIC Service Center operation. WASPIC and WSU can negotiate an appropriate cost recovery schedule that would be reasonably priced for local law enforcement and provide suitable support for the lab. Dr. Lovrich wanted to express his regrets that he couldn't be here tonight, but would definitely be happy to follow up with all of you, and provide the potential for WSU to provide the first such body-worn camera analysis arrangement for local law enforcement and the county. I will just tell you, I've taken up too much time, but I will just tell you that this is so unique, the Pullman, the Pullman Police Department has been very helpful in, in creating a device or helping test a device, which is sorely needed, not only here in Washington State, but as time is going on, it's going to be needed in the entire nation. And right here, you know, in Pullman, we can become a hub for that marijuana impairment, which is absolutely extremely important for everybody. So just wanted to mention that.
Yes, Mary, good, welcome. Okay, go to Senator first, then.
Thank you, Councilman. Worked with Nick for many, many years in my career, could you share that electronically with my office? I'm not a good.
I think you got an email.
Most definitely.
You should have gotten an email.
It just came this afternoon, it was late.
Okay, well.
You've been between meetups.
Joe, Councilman, I appreciate it, I think you've, I think it's a very, very good idea.
So, appreciate that, Councilman Weller. And my, I have a bill that I dropped last session, and it's still alive, but it's struggling a little bit, and I think that it would be a great source to provide your funding, and we may need to rework the bill, but basically, taking and capping and re-appropriating some of the cannabis revenues from the taxes, and focusing it towards county law enforcement, where the appropriate place is for that, and then raising the cap from 15 million to 30 million, because the revenues from cannabis are coming in very strongly at somewhere between 350 and 375 million into state revenue. Most of that is for other purposes, but there was a portion that was for city and a portion for county. It, it increases the funding to both cities and county for.
We would appreciate that.
Yes, substantial increase to both. And a limit of no less than 150,000 to counties currently right now, the counties are, there are only eight counties in the state that get more than 150,000 in revenue from the cannabis sales. And obviously, the counties and cities are bearing most of the cost of both law enforcement and, and care for people who are impaired. And so, maybe we need to rework the language a little bit with your help to make it work better. This year, it, it is stuck in appropriations and probably won't stand much of a chance at this point, but maybe we can have those conversations and really move a more thoughtful bill forward next year.
Joe?
I have a question. Do you feel if the appropriate place to present would be public safety? Is it more about, you know, you wanting to work with a partnership with law enforcement, or is it more about medical impairments? I'm trying to get an idea, what committee would be the best place for a work session?
Yeah, I can't speak for Dr. Lovrich, but we have been working in the public safety area, and we have seen that police increasingly, and boater, and the boating authority have seen individuals who smoke, drink, smoke more.
Let's talk afterwards, because I think I can help guide you.
Yeah, thank you.
Brandon?
Yeah, well, thank you very much for joining us, I really appreciate it. And for Representative Schmick, I really appreciate the LNI help you're getting, you're giving us, yeah.
Should never have to be.
Well, I appreciate that. So, yeah, I'll be brief. I just, what's on my heart and mind today is, I'm really proud of our council and our community for setting a priority to, to look at downtown. And I appreciate Representative Di, that you brought up downtown, and the mayor said we're not done yet, right? It is, it is a work in progress, and we're investing the money to have a downtown master plan and to do all that. And part of what we get back from the consultant is going to include some action items, and one of them, as you know, and it's on here, but we do talk about the self-bypass. And, you know, traditionally, we look at it as a way that people move, and, and our experience downtown, I appreciate Representative, our Councilman Weller mentioned, there's an economic aspect to this too. It allows our transportation to move freely, especially if they are transporting goods. And so I think that's going to be really important for us moving forward. We've talked about it a lot, and I think we're willing to do some things. Adam Lincoln mentioned, you know, yes, we are willing to, to also put our best foot forward and explore a transportation benefits district, explore those things that we need to do, you know, to, to have even additional skin in the game. But it's a big ask, and there's no way we're going to be able to do something like this without your help. But it certainly will help the, the continuation of our, of our efforts and our prioritization of downtown. So thank you, that's all I have.
Brandon mentioned Adam, Adam is home sick tonight. His two young ones, they were sick first, and then obviously shared everything that they possibly had, so. He wished he could be here tonight and wished he would not be sick. So with that, Dan, is there any comments you'd like to make?
Yes, I'd like to thank you for being here. Representative Schmick, to your point about, I think it was you, more providers for mental health care. I'm on, I'm part of the Office of Community Mental Health Task Force through WSU, and we, one of the things we're talking about is creating more curriculum that we can train, so like a master's in social work, where we can have more immediate counseling to try to mitigate issues getting larger. And so that is one thing that we are considering and working on is.
Can I address that?
Yes.
One of the ideas that we have, the amount of hours that you have supervised counseling, I would like to see students who are studying to enter into counseling sooner, actual hands-on experience, but we're going to have to pay the supervisors for doing it.
Right.
Because right now, the supervisory positions are unpaid. We've got to change that, because if we allow these people to go in and talk sooner, and if it gets over their head, they've got to, you know, move them on to someone who can help them. But we're going to need more direct supervision of those folks. I'm just trying to get people to see people sooner.
Well, and that's the point, instead of a four-year PhD, let's get them out quicker.
It's either 2,000 or 3,000 hours. I mean, it's, it's a lot. That's why I'd like to see these folks who are studying get started sooner with closer supervision. It's one of the things we've been discussing because of the workforce shortage. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I did want to address that.
No, thank you, because I'll take that back as feedback. Also, our Cougar Health this semester made available for the week of finals, they piloted it in the spring, and they made it available this, this year, is immediate access to counseling if you needed it. So students could call, and they would have a provider to them within like an hour or something, so whereas.
Which is excellent.
So they're trying to, we're trying to grow that program as well to make.
How about telling your girls not to do porn?
Look, with, man, the conversation is up here on council, it's not in the audience tonight.
Bullshit. Tell the girls not to do porn. That would solve that problem.
We may, if you, if you continue to interrupt, we'll have to have you removed from the place.
Well, I am that ready to be removed, because I'm so bored, I mean.
Well, then, fine, why don't you leave right now then?
Well, because I want to raise the issue about the farmers, why are you guys not talking about the farming prices?
This is the time when you're going to be escorted out of here, we've already given you the warning. You need to be quiet, or you can be escorted out of here. Okay? So it's your choice.
So anyway, I just want to let you know that on campus, we're working, they are working hard to make the, the resource much more accessible and easier to get to, and it's been very successful.
Okay, Dan, do you have some comments?
Yeah, continuing on the topic of mental health, and I know Ann's work on that committee has, has probably looked at a lot of these issues as well, but with our Cougar Health Services and looking at that workforce issue of, if finding it very difficult to hire more counselor positions, they, you know, they've put forth, WSU has put forth a commitment to hire more counselors to meet some of those needs, but they're finding it difficult to fill those positions, because we're not having enough people in the labor market to, to apply to those jobs. So is there any, anything in the current plan to create incentives for increasing the number of people getting the types of education that are?
That's part of the reason why we invested in the teaching hospital, for strictly for mental health. The problem is, is that we're a ways out from seeing the results of that. That's why my, why my comment earlier about we need everything now. Part of the reason why you're having trouble hiring is the fact that we have integration of mental health, chemical and substance abuse, and behavioral health by 2020, which is in two weeks, three weeks. And where all these things have to be combined. So you have carriers, practices, everyone trying to hire the same folks that you're trying to hire, which is just making the problem worse. And that's part of the reason why you're having a hard time finding folks, and we are keenly aware of the shortage of workers that we have. So we're looking at things like joining a psychiatrist compact, so that licensure is much easier in, in our state. We are looking for ways that we can. We are looking for ways that we can increase the workforce. We're looking at ways, military, oftentimes, they can move here and they're qualified to work, but licensure's been a problem. We're, we're working on a medical compact for those, for the military families to be able to, so they can work here as soon as they get her, to expedite that process. We're, if you have ideas, more than happy to listen to them, but these are the things we are doing, and because we realize how short we are.
Well, we do appreciate what the legislature did for the community colleges in terms of funding enough money so we could hire nurses and nursing instructors at the community colleges and technical colleges throughout the state. That was a big move, and because trying to find qualified nurses to teach when they were being paid more at hospitals, and this was a major challenge, and that also could help as far as working with mental health, too.
Yes.
So, we do appreciate what the legislature did for us last year on that. Al?
I'm going to just jump back here real quick into our, as you noticed on here, our economic development priorities, and to kind of tail on Brandon a little bit about our downtown revitalization. You know, we have a, we have quite a momentum going in the community here and have for a couple of years now. And, you know, Pullman being the largest city in Whitman County, we need to have that downtown, right? This is where a lot of people come to shop and do everything else. And part of this is to make sure that we have that for our residents around here. And so, you know, we're working on that right now. We've got this consulting firm helping us get some ideas, and we've got the momentum moving, and we need to keep that going. We're going to have some costs in this, you know, and a lot of our little towns, Colfax, Palouse, all that have had their downtowns redone multiple different ways, but we're looking at needing to do that ourselves here. And so, we're probably going to be coming to you, looking for some funding in some way to help us with some of that. And, you know, we're going to have, we have a major highway going through town that we've got to work with there, and hopefully, they can work with us on making some changes there. So, I'm just putting our plug in there. This is our time, and I'll be honest with you, if we don't get this done soon with this push, I don't ever see it happening, and we can't afford for Pullman to go by the wayside like others have. So, I'm just putting my plug in there.
One of the questions I have, have, have we really inventoried all the potential tools in the toolbox to do it?
That's where we're working at right now.
So, consultants working.
Because we look at a, we look at a supplement, you know, supplemental budgets, you don't make big moves. And we look at 21, and have we gone through all of the tools in the toolbox that we may use or may not? The one program escapes me right now.
Well, there's the Main Street program.
So, we have, there is now a downtown association that's been formed and moving towards that Main Street program.
Have we looked at...
And we're following right along with that.
Right. And that's just...
We're going to fund each year now.
That inventorying, that when Pullman gets that point, pull the trigger, whether it's Curb, whether it's Main Street, et cetera, that we've inventoried all the tools, we don't overlook something.
Okay.
Because it could be some of the infrastructure we could be looking at, it could be the Main Street programs, on and on. Economic development people know the tools better than I do, but it wasn't very many years ago that Whitman County, until Michael Ekinova, nobody had used Kirk.
Yeah, right.
And I was, I was happy to hear that as a former Curb member, but that's my concern, we're lined up inventorying everything.
Well, we're working on it.
Good, good.
Just so you know.
Just along those same lines, my understanding is that before you can enter into an agreement with the Main Street program, you have to have a downtown association. And so, that downtown association has been formed.
Right.
And as a matter of fact, we're entering into a memorandum of understanding to be discussed tomorrow at the Chamber Board of Directors meeting. So, that, just to tag on to what Councilmember Swanson said, we're moving in that process.
Right, that's exactly laying the groundwork I was thinking of.
And we've, the players in town, university, Switzer Engineering, the Chamber, the city, are all working together to get that done.
One of the good things is that we've improved that Main Street program. It used to be our, our city managers would be in their office at 12 o'clock, and at 12:00 1, click, because it was time-based rather than merit. And so, they've, they've grown the pot a little bit, they've changed it to merit rather than who can click the send button first. And it's, it's not perfected, but it's better.
And the city, we've, we've created a new position, an economic development position here in the city to help with all this. So, we're, we're moving forward with it, so.
Good. We're happy to hear that.
We need it to keep going.
So, on the, on the bypass, just maybe because you're doing what you're doing and laying really good planning and groundwork, you know, knowing that the transportation piece this year is going to be tough on a good day, and so, we can be strategic and that we can take this year to really make those plans solid and come in with a really strategic, prudent, and an effective package going into the big session in the following year. And hopefully, by then, the Supreme Court will have made their decision on I-976. Maybe we'll be able to politically walk the minefield on this shortfall and the culvert problem that they had over in King County that started the red ink running in the, in the transport budget, and maybe we can have walked through that in the supplemental. So, you can watch, you can be, you can watch with glee the fights that we might have over that and try and help us walk through that this year, and then we'll be really ready to go forward next year with something really sharp.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
It's good to get that heads up.
We're working on it. Just hope not. Thank you.
I also want to thank you and the rest of you for all the work you did with Highway 195. We've got passing lanes, and man, for all of us driving that road, that really helps out. And I know you've got at least one coming for passing lane on 26, so we got a couple...
The projects that were in connecting Washington, I'm crossing my fingers, are done for the next half of the month. That's, that's the plan.
All right. That's encouraging.
Well, when, when connecting Washington was baked in the Senate, it was fairly early in the lifespan. By the time we negotiated with the House, it was later. And what Senator King and others realized was some projects take longer to evolve than others, and if something else can move up without crowding anybody out. And 26 was exactly that. And firstly, I'm very excited because I don't want to be here when I'm 80 years old, wishing to get that project. And I think we have a real, we have a real problem with sticking to our project, sticking to our word in transportation, that if you vote for a transportation project list and the funding, it's a pretty darn tough decision, not easy. And if it happens, and it happens in the time span, for example, Senator Sheen provided the vote for Moscow Pullman, and he was, people were pleased. What if that had gotten pushed back because of fish culverts or a citizen initiative? And if you want to have a project, you have to have the trust and confidence of the public. And it's troubling to me, the gas tax was not on the ballot last month, but gas tax projects have been threatened with delays and retaliation. How will you ever get a generation of legislators to support a package again if that happens? They're going to get very cynical, very cranky, and I don't blame them. Whether it goes to fish culverts or whether it's put on delay, credibility is on the line. And that's, that's a real concern, that you have the credibility, because in government, there's only one thing that cannot be supplanted or swept, and that's the gas tax from the state of Washington. You can get into the Public Works Trust Fund, we've had that discussion.
Yes, you have, yes.
The Solid Waste Fund, the death tax was going to solve education, that can be supplanted. You can go into countless funds, and they can all be supplanted or swept. And if you want the public's confidence, you have to keep some integrity there. And it's, both political parties have done it, House has done it, Senate's done it, it all can happen, but that's a real key in future transportation.
Kevin, would you just address the one issue that you have from wastewater treatment in terms of the measurement tools that are rather difficult to obtain in order to try and meet the state standards? Sort of ties in with Joe's talking about LNI and things that are going there.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, good evening. I brought this up before with the legislators, so I think it won't be new news to you, and you've probably heard it from other constituents, too, but we have some pretty low limits on things like PCBs and deodorant, what are supposedly legacy pollutants. And the numbers are parts per quadrillion. The state, within the last few years, revised those numbers downward. So, there isn't a physical instrument that can measure to those low numbers, which is to our benefit, because we'll use the instrument that doesn't go that low and will show non-detex. But at some point, this will become an issue for the city of Pullman when the lab sampling and testing becomes more developed. We're going to have this limit on the end of our pipe that is going to be very difficult to meet. And the Washington Association of Washington Cities had hired a consulting firm, a pretty big national firm, to look at this a number of years ago. And for a plant our size, I think the number for capital improvements, just to try to even get close to this number, would be like $50 million, so.
Joe?
Is there any technology out there that could even, you could even attain this limit?
I would say no, there isn't today.
So, it's an unrealistic attainment goal?
Correct.
I don't think you're alone in this.
Yes, City of Spokane, City of Palouse, Walla Walla, there's a lot of eastern Washington communities dealing with this.
So, we've had those, we've had those conversations with Inland Empire Paper, and so I'm kind of referencing it as the Cheerio Box Dilemma, because Cheerio's boxes have a yellow in it, in the color on the box, and that yellow, in the processing of recycling, will kick out a PCB. And it's grandfathered in, that, that color is a branded color, and so, it's grandfathered in. And so, those new standards, they can meet the standard with the Cheerio's box in the current, in the previous standard, but they can't. And the question is, is it an artifact on the testing equipment, or is it truly not meeting the standard, correct? And so, those are things that I think that are good arguments, is that we are spending a tremendous amount of R and D and everything else. We're straining at nats in trying to reach an unattainable standard. And, you know, at what point do we reach purity?
The City of Palouse, I mean, they're talking about not allowing them to put any affluent in the water, and so, they're supposed to store all that. Right. That's, getting out is an option, getting out of discharge, too.
And the city of Pullman, as we have in our brochure here, is that we're spending around $8 million right now on ultraviolet disinfection for our wastewater treatment plant. We tied it to the Public Works Trust Fund, because if we were able to use that, we could have saved $500,000 that we could have used for road repairs and some other things. I just want to make sure that it's in there and give you a little highlight to look at. Is there any other comments the council would like to have before we wrap this up? Joe, do you want any closing comments?
Thank you for having us come in and to talk a little bit.
Yeah, this has been great, and I can see a lot of things that we can do to work hand in hand with you guys between now and, and the end of session to try and really make some progress forward with some of your needs.
And we'll be over there for the AWC thing in January.
The capital budget thing, getting you resources to know where the buckets are in capital budget and who the resources are that appropriate those buckets or budget those buckets. To kind of, so that when your plan comes forward, you'll have more of a broader knowledge of how to write for those buckets in the capital budget.
Thank you. Mark?
My House member said it all.
All right. Well, we want to thank all of you for being here tonight, just thank you so much. And we're going to take a three-minute break, rearrange the seats here for the council, and we'll rejoin the other council meetings.
Thank you so much.
Where was my Ritzfeld? I have...
It's on the agenda.
Yes.
There's a cross-section of...
It's set agenda, and there's just a net resolution, item number five.
Great.
I will get out of your hair.
It's a public constitution.
I deserve one of those.
But they have, what they have, they have something like that.
Scott Adams, the CEO of the Westport, is...
Art, we have a girl.
Yeah.
Also, they have...
I just wanted to introduce myself, because you always try to reach out to me and I remember about the...
Oh, it's very...
So, now I know, based on what we're doing, it's like my brain is like, baby, we've got this.
I was thinking all of the places in the...
Try to get your community to do projects that you're...
I just said, I don't know what the day's for.
Yeah.
I am so not.
Yeah, so it'll be good to...
I'm always thinking about it.
I forgot that I had it.
And we have them talk, and us all listening and figure out.
We'll get out of there.
Oh, we'll do, Mark.
And we're paying, and we're paying, and this year, not so much next year.
I'm fine right here.
Well, we can just like sing in there.
This whole first year, at least I have a question.
I was just, I was just saying that he's going to want to hang on.
Actually, switch faces.
I am your problem child.
I don't know that, I only know...
I will, I will...
Blueberry juice, a pure...
Okay, I'm good.
How are we doing?
Okay, good.
Yeah, all they need is tagging this morning by the legal end of the...
Looking forward to that.
Yeah, and then that transcode, and all we've been told about transcode is don't have.
We're going to move you out.
Well, we have to...
No, serious?
They've been, they've, they've...
Did we want to redistrict?
Yes.
I have a leader in my office that I'm operating to break out it.
There's no more...
There's plugins on our side.
Thank you so much, Mark.
It's not here this year.
Mark, you're going to want to sit in this chair tonight. I love that. You should get that...
It's on the agenda.
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 So now I know, based on what we're doing, it's like, my brain is like, oh baby, we've got this.
I was thinking all of the places in the.
No, try to get your community to do projects that you're.
I just said, I don't know what the day's for.
Yeah.
I am so not.
Yeah, so it'll be good to, I'm always thinking about.
I forgot that I had it.
And we ask them, and us all to figure out.
We'll get out of there.
Oh, we'll do.
And we're paying, and we're paying, and this year, not so much next year.
Let's target.
I'm fine right here.
Well, we can just like, sing in there.
This whole first year.
I was just, I was just saying that he's going to want to.
Actually, switch faces.
I don't know that, I only know.
I will, I will.
Blueberry juice, a pure.
Okay, I'm good.
Yeah, all they need is tagging this morning by the legal name.
Looking forward to that.
Yeah, and then that transpo, also, we've been told about transpo is doing.
No, serious?
Yes.
I have a heater in my office that I'm operating to break out.
There's plug-ins on our side.
Thank you so much.
It's not here this year.
You're going to want to sit in this chair tonight. I love that. You should get that.
I went and looked for somebody, but I wasn't able to find.
I think we're all.
We'll see in January.
I didn't notice it, but I do now.
I'm going to move my cell over, and the rest of it will figure out.
Well, I know, but we don't want to, we don't want to.
It's not a bad attempt.
Yeah, so we have.
We still have one extra chair, I think.
Where's that chair?
I think.
We've got Brandon down here.
I'll just stay here.
No, no, we get five chairs. We're back in the room.
I'm still on.
We're just rotating everywhere.
I just asked you if the air.
You ought to be over here.
I could have just got this out in there.
He'll just have to use his knee.
Yeah, there you go.
What is this one?
Whoa.
Are they going to kill the air?
I'm good at directing.
That was your left over from.
Those are travel.
He sat on the Board of Adjustment, said that was the left over.
Yeah.
We recycle.
We do when we go visiting.
We use.
Yeah.
Our way uniforms.
All right, so we're all set?
Okay, watch out below.
Chili, Alex.
Eight twelve.
They can stay in.
So, D. And I've got a bag here, too.
Get a bubble move here.
When I do it.
We're supposed to wear our badges for the. No, no, you don't.
I bring this week every.
Somebody had to say.
I do, too.
I have it with me.
You have to check, like, every, you know, you bring out the one, the one badge.
You have your form. Everybody brought your form from Sandham, and I pointed out, call $6 to send us.
No, I actually didn't bring it. I'll bring it. He gets it, D gets it?
D gets it.
Okay, I'll get it.
So.
It's basically all it's this. Give it by, Al.
Welcome back to the Pullman City Council Meeting. We now move to item D on our agenda, which is the confirmation of appointments, reappointments, that you have before you. And you see that we am recommending for the Arts Commission, Dee Brady Boone, John Rich, Gail Siegel, Katie Bunch, Emerson, and Brandon Birch. The Board of Adjustment, Graham Aderson. For the Cemetery Committee, John Chaplin, Terrence Day, and Bob Warnock. And for Civil Services Commission, Dave Gibney. For Historic Preservation Commission, Phil Gruen, Allison Munch-Ratola. For the Lawson Gardens Committee, Kim Kaiser, McNazarelli. For the Library Board of Trustees, Brandon Wolken. For the Parks and Recreation Commission, Zachary Fredrickson, Matthew Winchell. And the Planning Commission, Marsha Gallagher. These are mostly reappointments. At this point, I would like to have a motion to consent to the mayor's. Still moved. Second. Moving second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And now comes item E. So this is D, and D will be doing the administrative oaths of office.
Okay, and can I have you all stand?
One, two, has been reelected.
Me, please. I state your name.
Dan Parks.
Nathan Weller.
Eileen McCall.
Glenn Johnson.
Pat Wright. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the State of Washington, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge its duty and the office for the City of Pullman. City Councilmember.
Mayor.
According to law, to the best of my ability.
All right. Thank you, D.
You're welcome.
Sign the forms here, we'll look later on.
Yes.
That, we now move to item F, the consent agenda. These items are considered routine in nature. Do I hear a motion to read by title only?
Second.
Moving second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, Laura McAluin, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Your consent agenda consists of a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 19, 2019, and approve them as submitted. A motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the special meeting of December 2nd, 2019, and approve them as submitted. A motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 3rd, 2019, and approve them as submitted. A motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 10, 2019, and approve them as submitted. A motion approving dispersments represented by accounts payable checks numbered 98206 through 98308, totaling $4,134,989.96. A motion approving dispersments represented by accounts payable checks numbered 98184 through 98205, totaling $411,258.91. Electronic transfers, 565 through 570, totaling $648,563.63. Payroll check number 74900, totaling $84.42. And payroll direct deposits numbered 57900 through 58325, totaling $1,138,751.23. A motion accepting the water tank 11 and booster pump station 11 contract as complete. A motion accepting the accelerated streets resurfacing 2019 contract as complete. A motion ratifying change order number two to contract 17-06A wastewater treatment plant disinfection and miscellaneous improvements. In addition, you have resolution number R-83-19, a resolution accepting a public stormwater easement from Rebel Creek Properties LLC, a Washington limited liability company. Resolution number R-84-19, a resolution accepting a public stormwater easement from Corporate Point LLC, a Washington limited liability company. Resolution number R-85-19, a resolution accepting a public stormwater and utility access easement from Harvest South Pullman LLC, a Washington limited liability company. And resolution number R-86-19, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Pullman and the Pullman Senior Citizens Association for the purpose of providing transportation for the Pullman Nutrition Program and city-sponsored trips and special events.
Chair and item McConnell would like out for discussion. Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of items one through 13. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Moving second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now move to the regular agenda. Item number one, ordinance amending an ordinance adopted November 27. Mike Urban.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So before you tonight is ordinance number 19-12, which does amend the ordinance from last November where the biennial budget was adopted. So under RCW 35A, 33120, the city council could find it in the best interest of the city of Pullman to amend a previous budget, and this is the process that we've been working on the last two meetings to work through that. So before you tonight is the final product. I did go ahead and incorporate council's recommendations on the civic improvement fund as part of the final. Couple items of note, the first time we met, I brought up the issue that there may be some additional dollars for the water fund, based on the pipes for the retreat that we need for the infrastructure. Based on the amount of dollars that need to spend, it need to go out to bid, and the timing of the bid, it's not going to work out for 19, it's going to be a 2020 item, so we can address that at a future time. The other item is the airport board is meeting tomorrow to approve their budget amendments, while we'll those into as part of the document for viewing. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding this, and we do recommend that you adopt this ordinance as presented.
Questions, Mike. Seeing none, do I hear a motion to approve?
Need to adopt ordinance 19-12.
Second. Ordinance number 19-12, an ordinance amending ordinance number 18-31, adopted in November 27, 2018, and entitled "An Ordinance Adopting a Biennial Budget for the City of Pullman for the Biennium 2019 through 2020."
I just wanted to thank Mike for all the time that he has spent with me, going through these budget items and learning more about it and understanding how it all comes together and how it sometimes comes apart. So, but thank you for your time. You've been very patient, and he is the best explainer. If you have questions, he is, he is absolutely fabulous.
That. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, council.
Item number two is a resolution accepting a bid of Metalworks of Montana. With that, Kevin Gardas, our public works director.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. The Neil Public Library Roof Replacement Contract consists of a new membrane roof and associated accessories for the library. The project is included in the city's capital improvement program. Bids were opened on September 10th with four bids received. The low bidder was Metalworks of Montana, Inc., doing business as Missoula Sheet Metal and Roofing, at $127,885.30, which is well below the architect's estimate of $191,273.40. It was very close to the second bidder, though, within $3,000, so I think it's a good bid. Work on site can begin no earlier than May 11th and must be completed no later than August 21st. Staff is recommending council award contract 19-06, Neil Public Library Roof Replacement to Metalworks of Montana, Inc., and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Question, Al.
Just a quick question. So in regards to the completion date, if they're not done by then, what kind of penalties are there associated with it?
It's our standard, standard construction specification liquidated damages. It's a formula.
Does it go by the day or something?
Yeah.
Or just, okay.
And it's set up to give the contractor a window between May and August, but once they start working, they have 28 days to finish the work. So if they start June 1st, they have to be done by the end of June.
Any other questions? And do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt resolution number R-87-19.
Second.
Moving second.
Resolution number R-87-19, a resolution accepting the bid of Metalworks of Montana, Incorporated, DBA Missoula Sheet Metal and Roofing, for the Neil Public Library Roof Replacement, and authorizing execution and delivery of the contract for said project.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number three is a resolution authorizing acceptance of Transulta grant for solar projects. With that, again, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. At council's December 18, 2018, meeting, almost a year ago, it approved applying for two grants to help fund a rooftop solar array on the gym building at the new city hall site. Both grant applications were successful. It took a little time to get the second one, but we've received notice, we got both of them, which means the project is a go. This grant amount is for $260,000. The second grant, which should come to council early next year, is with the Department of Commerce for $183,000. The remainder of the project cost is city match at $124,667. Total project cost is $567,667. Construction is expected to start in April and be complete by summer, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions on this one? Nathan.
Not really a question, just awesome job. I think this is a great, great step forward. I know we have other businesses in our town that are, you know, have solar arrays and, you know, very cool, very cool, very tech forward. Thank you.
Just cost-wise, as opposed to other power, is this going to still cost us more money having solar, or will we be paying less or equal? Just kind of.
Yeah, so the way this will work is, for the city's portion, $124,000, $125,000, the energy savings that we'll see from the solar array would basically pay that back in under 15 years. That's the way the ESCO firm had calculated it out. So if the solar array lasts for 30 years after that break-even point, then it's just energy savings for the city.
Good. That's great to hear. And with panels today, there's been such an improvement compared to what solar panels were just five years ago.
And one of the tweaks was between the time council approved applying for the grants and us getting notified, the firm that the ESCO was using for their solar panels, which had to be made in Washington, had changed, the firm had changed hands, the company, and so that those panels were being made outside of the state, so they had to find another panel within the state of Washington. So all the.
They're making them in Moses Lake. I know that they have a solar panel there.
I'm not sure where these are made, but they're made in Washington somewhere, so.
So, and originally, this was going to be on the ground, but now it's on the building?
Correct.
So saving some parking lot space.
And Brandon's a play area.
Yeah, the snow slat, yeah, the sledding hill.
Okay. There's no other question? Do I hear a motion on this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution number R-88-19, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of Transalta grant for city hall solar project.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number four is a motion to approve an authorized execution of a collective bargaining agreement with Teachers Local 690. Mike Urban.
Thank you again, Mayor. Hi, council. So before you, in your packet is the tracking version of the contract that's been negotiated between Teamsters Union Local 690 and our city staff, headed by HR Director Karen Sires, who's in the audience tonight, too, if you have any technical questions on the contract. The long and the short of it is, this, the existing contract expires at the end of the year. The local has got together and voted on this contract last week, so it's in front of you now for adoption as well. If council so chooses to adopt the collective bargaining agreement, that puts all of our bargaining units under contract until the end of next year, and we can redo a couple of these other ones as well. So we're keeping ahead of the game, which is a comfort for us, especially for budgeting. Some of the highlights to point out on this, items of note, are the wage increases for this unit, 2.5% for 2020, 2% for '21, as well as '22. We're streamlining some of the medical plan options, and then a lot of cleanup language necessitated by labor laws. So we really want to thank the bargaining units as well. They've come to the table and worked really hard with city staff to craft this document. So we're recommending that you pass it as presented, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mike on this. Seeing none, do I hear a motion on this?
Move to adopt a collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Moving second. A motion to approve an authorized execution of the 2020, 2022 Public Works Collective Bargaining Agreement with Teachers Union Local 690. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we now move to item number five, a discussion of Hood Drive, Brelsford Drive name change. With that, we're going to start with Kevin Gardas, we'll have Laura's input, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mayor. At its regular meeting of August 6, 2019, council approved renaming of Hood Drive to Brelsford Drive. At the same meeting, council accepted the dedication of Brelsford Drive between Harvest Drive and the former Hood Drive. After council approval of the name change, members of the Hood family have raised objections to renaming Hood Drive to Brelsford Drive. In thinking about possible options for council to consider, the following alternatives are presented. One is to do nothing, leave the street names the way they currently exist. Second alternative would be to rename current, the current section of Brelsford Drive that was formerly Hood Drive, back to Hood Drive. And the third alternative presented is to leave Brelsford Drive as it exists today and look for another opportunity to designate a Hood Drive with new development. We could also look at renaming an existing street to Hood Drive, though that can get more complicated if there are existing structures already addressed off the street to be renamed. Typically, developers are afforded the opportunity to name streets in the areas they develop. Mr. Brelsford has provided a letter that's included in your council packets. Drive that was formerly Hood Drive, back to Hood Drive. And the third alternative presented is to leave Brelsford Drive as it exists today and look for another opportunity to designate a Hood Drive with new development. We could also look at renaming an existing street to Hood Drive, though that can get more complicated if there are existing structures already addressed off the street to be renamed. Typically, developers are afforded the opportunity to name streets in the areas they develop. Mr. Brelsford has provided a letter that's included in your council packets. Both city staff and Mr. Brelsford are agreeable to finding a naming opportunity for the Hood family with future development. Staff suggests that Council give consideration to the third alternative, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question of Kevin on this.
Well, I'm like the different options here, but I'm in favor of moving forward with option three. You know, we, in good faith, changed the name from Hood to Brelsford, and I don't see a reason to change it back if we can name another street in town. And Mr. Brelsford's certainly willing to do so, and we have other developers that you've probably talked to that possibly could name another street, Hood Drive, in town. You know, the property was purchased by Brelsford Corporation and all of that, and a lot of things were done, and it could have been replatted where he wouldn't have even had to check with us to see if he changed the name. So, I think that at this point with everything, I'd like to, I'd like to suggest that we move forward with option three.
What's in the name? I think the Hood family definitely has a preference for this area, and, you know, Brelsford seems amenable to other options. So, I don't think he has as much of a preference towards just that one spot. Whereas, in my opinion, from what we've seen over a number of different council meetings, is that the Hood family very much feels that this is extremely important at this spot. So, moving, in my opinion, moving the Hood Drive to a different area doesn't end up taking care of any issues that has arisen. They, the Hood family won't appreciate being placed in another area, so it's just going to cause additional issues. And if Brelsford is okay with it going back to the Hood family, I think that takes care of all the parties involved, in my opinion. Number two.
You're looking at the drive here, and it's Brelsford's Drive, and the one that was Hood and going back to it is what you're saying.
Yeah, I would say so.
Other comments?
I have a question. Is, so Hood Drive, when that was put in place, Kevin, was, was that something that was adopted by Council as Hood Drive, or was that just like a name on a short platter? I mean, how was that originally?
We'll call him you later.
Yeah, I believe it had to have been dedicated. If it's a city street right away, it would have had to have been dedicated.
Other questions or comments?
Well, you know, I think it was Wayne Brelsford Jr.'s intention originally, when he bought this property, to change this street to Brelsford Drive anyway, so that it's one little loop around the corner. You know, Mr. Brelsford has, in my opinion, done all the background he needed to do. He checked with the owner of the property. The Hoods don't own this ground. They didn't have any financial stake in this development, as the Brelsfords have, and I just, I, let me just say this. I know the Hood family pretty well. Probably know more of the Hoods myself than most people in the room here, and I think that in the end game, Nathan, that they would love to have a street named Hood in town.
That's actually wrong.
Anyway, I just think that when we made the change, we did so with Mr. Brelsford doing what he needed to do, what he thought was right to do, which actually, he never would have had to do. He could have just changed it on its own and replatted the ground.
Since he owned the ground.
So, may I be...
Just, just one second. Is there any other comments or questions from the council?
I appreciate the emotional content here. I really do, and... Why, we kind of hear further comments from you, because Mayor says that you maybe have had further things to add.
I don't have anything to add.
Okay.
It's simply, it's just, other than to let you know, it's, it's within the Council's discretion. If you were to take action, you would need to do so by ordinance, because it was renamed, previously renamed by ordinance.
Yeah, it is a Hobson's choice, that's for sure, and very difficult one, isn't it?
So, I'll just respond, and I understand it's well within, you know, Brelsford's right to rename the whole thing. When looking at the map, and there's that, that short area, you know, that's Hood, and then the rest, that's Brelsford that links into. I know it's supposed to...
Well, it's Brelsford now.
Yeah, I know. The whole thing is, what I'm saying is, going back and keeping that one short area as Hood. I just, I don't, I don't see why we wouldn't, there's definitely an emotional aspect to this, and if it's a matter of just renaming it back to Hood Drive and finding that middle ground, I think, in my opinion, as city council members, at least for myself, that would be the best, just middle ground option. It sounds like, as I mentioned, Mr. Brelsford is, you know, not sorely attached to it, and while it is within his right, if he's not sorely attached and the Hoods are, I don't, I don't see an issue, and I think we're just gonna, it just creates additional problems, and that's my opinion.
Now, you may come up to the podium and identify yourself for the record, and you have three minutes maximum.
You always give me three minutes, and I am grateful. The farmers today are having trouble. You know that, and I haven't heard any, any mention of the price cuts that have come for the farmers. The Heinrichs are hurting, the farmers are hurting, everybody's hurting. But this county and this town was built on the farmers' backs. My family, the Youngs, the Hoods, the Clemguards, the Bishop's, the Kinkades, and why, why right now would you take that away when they're hurting enough from the tariffs and the economy? Why would you take that away and give it away to some newbie developer? This town is based on being the most important farming community in the United States. It's the most productive. And why would you take that honor away from them? Thank you.
Did you, I don't think you identified yourself for the record, please. Please identify yourself.
Laura Hoopis. Thank you.
Is there any other comments that people would like to make? And now, obviously, yes, Nathan?
Just a quick comment. You know, I asked my dad about the, the family farmstead that we have in, that he grew up on in Yuma Point, Oregon, and there's a short, short road that goes up to that farmstead, and that serves two or three other residential properties. And the county, unbeknownst to our family, about 20 years ago, went back and renamed a bunch of unnamed roads out in the county, and they, they decided to rename them after the families that had lived on those farmsteads. They didn't reach out to our family. Our family hadn't lived there in quite some time, but they did that to honor the families that founded that area, based on the farms that had developed there. And I asked my dad, you know, given this situation that we're in now, if he would expect, if the county was looking at potentially renaming that air, that street in the future, if there was a developer came in and wanted to rename that street, if he would expect the county to reach out to our family? And he said, no, it's not our property. We haven't lived there in 30 years. I wouldn't expect them to, to have any need to reach out to us. So, it's, you know, we've always kind of thought it was cool for the county to do that. It was, it was, it was cool to see that sign, and some of my relatives may or may not have stolen one of those signs from their own personal collection at one point, but I don't think there's any right to be, for the, for the family to have, have that street named after them, as a matter of right, because they were here and they, they have that history connected to them. They're certainly deserving of our respect, and, you know, even Mr. Brelsford said they're deserving of the respect, and Al has said that in the past, too. They're, they're deserving of our respect, and this dedication of a street name is, is a fitting goal for us to have. But I have still not heard any, anybody say, why this particular area, other than the fact that the Chipmans and the Wilsons had a connection to the Hood family, and they dedicated that as part of that plat, when the Wilsons platted that. And so, I, I just don't understand why there's an emotional connection to this piece of property.
Because it was there. It was the Chipmans, and it was the, there was another name, and it was there. So, why change it to Brelsford?
Okay, now, now we're back to this, the council, okay? Finish up.
Thank you for providing that, that little bit of insight there, but I...
So, you just change it to a developer?
Once again, once again.
You know, when, when I was thinking about this issue, I was, I was kind of on the side of what, what Al was saying, that option three seems like a good option. The, the short little plat, or the short little section of road there, it doesn't have any addressed facilities on it. It's, it's just a street sign there. And, and given the history that the Hood family has in this town, I think it'd be more fitting to give them the name to a street that has more substantial part of our, our network of transportation and, and has a more substantial future in development in, in our community.
Yeah, I know I've already spoken plenty, and, but I will say, us making, the city council making a decision about what is an emotional connection to that piece of land, when, when that family, or the descendants of that family have already said, this is what we feel, this is, this is what we feel is significant. Whether, it doesn't matter whether it's connected to some significance, some, you know, farm or anything like that, they feel it's significant. And so, honoring, in my opinion, honoring that significance that they have for that piece of land, if we name another street, it's not going to mean as much to them.
And the naming of a street would be up to a developer. Whoever owns the property has the right to name the...
Yeah, I understand, but, I mean, as, as has already been discussed, that dedication means something to them, and if there's a middle ground that we can meet, I, I don't see that there's a big deal.
And I think for point of record, Brelsford is not a newbie. His family has been doing property here for a long time.
Yeah, I don't know if this is right or wrong, but maybe just to chew on this, you know, in this case, this, this original road was named by the family that owned the land.
Wilson.
Wilson. They obviously didn't have an emotional enough tie to the still remaining, what it was. I mean, they yielded that over to someone else.
Well, Brelsford asked them about it.
And they said, fine.
Again? Okay. Any other comments? So, I, yes?
Well, I appreciate you talking to your dad about it and that type of thing, and I, I see some similarity, but then there's a little bit difference here. The, the property that you're talking about and the road that you're talking about was at your property. This small little section of road in Pullman was never Hood property. It's the significance, I understand the family liking to have a street named after them.
No, that's not the...
But the property itself was, you know, not there.
Your time to talk has already happened, okay?
I just, I'm, I understand what you're saying, Nathan, but I just, and I've talked to some of the Hoods about this, and they're okay with another street being named, but, so...
It's, and you can tell that this person's not a Hood.
It's Eileen.
Okay, Eileen.
Well, I've been on all sides of this over the last couple of weeks. We have, it seems like yesterday, had to make decisions that affected people's property in a very emotional way. The lost trail drive, the trail easements and that sort of thing. These are, these are difficult emotional choices, and it's, unfortunately, it falls to us as elected city officials to sometimes make these really, really hard decisions. And this, again, the lost trail drive discussion about where those trails, that was a heartbreaking decision, but in the end, we, we have to do what is eventually best for the city, because that's our job. And as much as I, you know, I've known Marion Hood for, for a very long time, we have to do what's best for the city, and to add a piece with this kind of an incongruous name in this area, this booming area of our commercial district, would be not our best decision. I will be voting for option number three.
So, I think Kevin and Laura would like to hear where we're at on that, and I've heard the number for three. So, why don't we just go by the council and just say which option you would prefer, and this way will help us prepare an ordinance against what's needed.
I mean, for me, I see all the sides of this. I'm, I'm willing to go where, where the majority goes, because I see the virtue in, in each of these. I mean, I, I don't feel that there's a great answer on any of this. You know, so, a discussion for another time. I mean, I would like to...
I think we'd like to get this resolved.
Yeah, no, I mean, a different discussion, meaning how, how roads are renamed, the information that we receive, you know, we, we got something for Wilson. It was a, something named Hood, you know, those, those kind of issues. On this, I mean, I, I see the virtue in three, even if it's not a perfect solution. If that's where the majority is, I'm fine with that. Not fine, but I'll go with that, yeah.
I agree with option three.
Nathan is going for...
I think, well, and just to explain, with it being, you can serve both the citizens and serve the city as well. You know, one, one party feels it's emotional, the other party doesn't really feel it's emotional, so that's why I'm voting two.
Two, yep, okay. Eileen?
Option three.
Option three.
Three.
That's majority, so you've got, you could, and Laura, is there anything else?
The result of that is, is no action.
No action, that's correct. So, thank you very much. I know it was an emotional decision, as we could also hear that as well. Okay, item number six is the vacant commercial building draft ordinance. With this, Laura McAlum.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, so, in your packet, you have a draft ordinance regarding vacant properties in a commercial district in the central business district. There are a number of blanks, and so it's provided to you at your request. It is based on the Everett-Washington version that Councilmember McCall brought up. So, I've highlighted areas in there, and just am looking for direction from you.
Right. Discussion on the vacant building draft ordinance.
I guess this is my, I have to take point on this. I have not spent as much time at my desk as I would have liked to do further research and look at some other ordinances from other communities, and I've run across a few, and I sent some to Laura, I sent some to, I haven't gotten to everybody, I don't think, and sent around some samples. We are seeing, I think one of the contentious points was about the windows and how we do window dressing or not do window dressing. It's being done in other communities, and some of them are more carefully phrased than others, and sort of keep people maybe out of those minefield areas. So, I think we can dig around and find language. I think this is an excellent starting point, but I thought a lot about what Al said, because I was willing to take a little more of a middle ground, but I thought a lot about what Al said about, why even do this if we're not going to do the windows? And so, I think we can maybe use language like, avoid using brown craft paper, or avoid using unfinished wood to secure buildings, or, I think, I think there's a lot of, Laura, I trust you to be clever enough to come up with something for us.
I'm happy to draft whatever you want. I do need direction on what you want, though.
I, I want something about, about window cover, addressing the window situation to make it more attractive and appealing downtown. I think that's...
So, what type of a window covering?
That's where we got to do our homework.
Would you recommend the Arts Commission being involved in some of these windows? Or maybe just as a possibility of advice or something?
I have no opinion on that.
Yes.
On that point, on the window coverings, I, I still have a lot of kind of trepidation about the window covering portion of this in general, because of the enforceability of it. I think that trying to craft that carefully, it's inherently difficult to craft that without being vague, and without, because what we're talking about here is forcing property owners to put something into their property. That's, that's kind of stretching the bundle of sticks that we have in enforcement. I think if, as an alternative, one of the things we discussed last time, that in lieu of requiring this for all vacant buildings would be to have an alternative to... of requiring this for all vacant buildings would be to have an alternative to have the registration fee and have, as an alternative to that, we may waive the registration fee if you agree to work with the Arts Commission, to have them put something up or provide something, I think is, I, I'd be more comfortable with something like that than forcing people to put something up and then having that kind of First Amendment issue come up of not being able to control exactly what they put up. I, I think there's some real problems with that and I, I don't know if it's possible to craft something that wouldn't be challenged in that area. So that's, that's some of my thoughts on that. You know, if anybody else has any-
Yeah, some of the materials that I read this, this last week, granted, they weren't all from the state of Washington, but most of them had fees associated with administration and, and most of them had pretty vast amount of waivers that were available. And so those were opt-in or enticing opportunities for, for these owners to say, I'd like that fee waived and I'm willing to, you know, to choose from these, one of 10 different window, you know, dressings. So I certainly think that that's, that's an option we can explore because I don't want to de-incentivize people purchasing vacant buildings as well, because they, they know they're immediately on the hook for getting that, that filled. So, you know, I'd like to, as Al said, the carrot rather than the stick, I'd like to incentivize. And, you know, if we do have a very lenient waiver process, that's fine, you know, if they're willing to, to beautify in some way.
Nathan?
Two things. One, you know, we're, we're focusing on, you know, this window covering thing. I think it should be noted that, you know, we have buildings that don't have windows that are vacant as well. You know, the theater is one. I mean, yeah, there's the box, the office box that they have there. But just focusing on the window coverings, you know, involving the Arts Commission, I think is definitely, you know, needed. Other than that, this is your vehicle, so let us, let us know.
Well, if you've read through the ordinance, the window coverings thing is only just a very small portion of it. And the rest of it is very congruent with other vacant building ordinances that we see all over the country. So, yeah.
So we'll go to Pat and then we'll go to Dan and then Dan, okay?
Well, I just think we need to incentivize compliance and we have to have a vehicle to address non-compliance. And I think that's part of the biggest issues that we've had is that we have ordinances out there that we don't enforce. And, you know, we need, if we're gonna, if we're gonna implement this, we need to have teeth in it. It needs to be able to be enforceable. And I guess that's my biggest issue, whether, whether it depends on the subjectivity of the window coverings or we involve the Arts Commission. Whatever we do, I think we need to make sure that it is able to be brought into compliance.
Dan?
Thank you. And the second, same section, item two, or talk, Laura points out that the fees, we're gonna need to justify them and make sure that we're avoiding unlawful taxation challenges. And I, I just, I wanted to bring that up. I, I don't know how to do that, but maybe by wa, providing waivers or as an incentive would, would help with that, but I think that's a very important point that we need to, you know, look at some miserable language in other communities.
Dan?
Yeah, on that point, that, that was one of the next things I wanted to bring up and really hope that the rest of the council can focus on that in terms of the enforceability of, of this increasing fee from year to year. I, I don't see how we can really justify that increase in that fee without just making it look like it's punitive. So the, the point of the fee should be to recover the costly administrative cost of implementing the program of enforcement. And I think that if we, one, one solution to that problem could be, we could set a fee and then just have it be a yearly fee and not have it go up in, in price. Because I, I just, I'm struggling to find what justification we could provide that would account for that increase in that fee from year to year, other than to just say that we were trying to punish business owners until they-
Or prompt action.
Yeah.
Which we're trying to do. And I could see the merit in that.
But how does that tie back to how much, how we're administering this program?
Mayor, I, I do wanna-
Nora, Alas, yeah.
Yeah, I do wanna follow up on Councilmember Records because that, there are a number of examples that have been provided where there is a graduated fee that's intended to compel a property owner to get the property occupied. Under, I, I don't think that survives a challenge in the state of Washington under the Washington State Constitution. So something that works in Delaware or in Illinois, under Washington's constitution and the case law interpreting what is a tax and what is a fee, it's very clear that unless you have a statutory authority to impose the tax, and I don't see an authority to do that for vacant buildings, it has to be an administrative fee and that fee has to be tied to the cost of administering the program. So what's it going to cost you to register the properties? Same analysis we went through for the downtown business registration and off the top of my head, I think that fee is $25. I don't have the chief here in town. In terms of how much we charge the commercial businesses to register with the police department, that fee is nowhere near close to the fees that were in the examples that were shown. So I don't, I don't, I'm doubtful you can come up with the justification to reach that level of fee that is even in the Everett ordinance. And the Everett City Attorney told me that there intent, that there was a punitive factor in that, and that's a large part of the reason why I don't think it's in, it'll survive challenge. And keep in mind, they've never enforced it.
Al, did you have comments?
I do. Okay. So, what's the whole intent of this? What, what are we doing? We're, we're trying to create something, an ordinance here, to make our downtown look better, more or less, right? And to keep things safe. So that's what this ordinance should be about. And to incentivize vacant building owners to make their property look nice. That's, I mean, that's the ultimate goal here, right?
And hopefully fill those buildings that are-
Right. And until, and until that happens, and the windows can be clear and open or black or whatever you want them to be at this point, you know? We want that, it, so that it makes the entire central business district look good and feel good. That's what this is about. I'm not into it to make money on anything, but if it has something to do with getting the building owner to try to get it rented versus just letting it sit vacant, I don't have a problem with that either. You know, we have some, some buildings that are vacant and have been for a long time where, in my own personal opinion, the building owners could care less whether they rent it or not.
Clearly.
I mean, that's the, that's the impression I get. And so I, if they want to leave their vacant, vacant building vacant, that's totally up to them, but I think that there should be at least some look and feel to make our city look good.
And so how do we, how do we do that with this?
So my personal opinion would be, in regards to window dressing, let's just go there successfully. Let's come up with a dozen different window decals and those are them. Now, what they are is something we'll have to figure out, but I don't think that it should be a random, every location, every time type deal. Let's come up with, and I'm just throwing a number out there, I'm just talking. Come up with, here's, here's, here's your 12 pictures, pick which ones you want to put in your window, here's the decals, done. Just like doing one of our utility boxes.
Yep.
You know, so there's an easy, simple way to do that. You know, the, the, the physical appearance of it and dilapidation and all that, you know, I think we can address fairly easily. But, I mean, it's, this isn't that big a deal. This is fairly easy. And to put pieces of plywood that have been laying on a shop floor and not even cover all the broken windows and signs, is that becoming? I've already said this before. I was not here at the last council meeting and I know you all had pictures of the exact building I'm talking about. Does that look good? No. And we're trying to revitalize downtown without something like this? Why are we even doing that?
So Laura-
Yeah.
It all comes down, it all comes down to McAlum Law here, so you've heard where the council would like to go. Maybe there's something you can address just with a window covering that can address that portion, at least that's a start. We, we, we go after that and then maybe we can move to the next stage if we need to.
We can tweak this.
Yeah.
So would that be a requirement that, well, can I run through some questions?
Yes, please do.
And then I'll help guide it. So how long would a building be vacant before you would, that would trigger the window covering requirement? I saw in the example ordinances that Councilmember McCall sent from around the country, anywhere from five days to 60 days.
Yeah. So what do we, what does anybody think?
I'm 30.
30.
30, month.
You know, there's-
Time for them to get a lease together.
Five days is ridiculous.
It is, and it's, yeah. Nathan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we know the average turnaround for a vacant building? I mean, do, is there any data on, you know?
There are some that I'm seeing here that have been here for several years.
Well, I know years, but I mean, in, in that, in that timeframe of five-
We can get some research on that. We can find that out from the real estate people.
I, I think that would be a good idea because if, if the, you know, economic, I mean, if the average turnaround for a building is, you know, I mean, what, 90 or something like that, based on the market, so I'm just, you know, I'm spitballing up here as, as we're talking.
I like that, having research facts, kind of justification for why we're choosing the, the timeline, I would, I would support that more than just picking a number out of the sky.
Yeah. There's gotta be information.
Well, the time they contract with a real estate broker-
Correct.
-that would be the timeframe, I think, is how long it takes. The building is empty now, how long does it take me to get to the real estate broker to start working on it?
But isn't there a difference too, between, in insurance there is, between vacant and unoccupied? So if a building is unoccupied and they clear it out, but then they stage it to sell it, it's not really vacant, correct? Because people are still going in and out of it. Like, we'll insure a home that's on the market, so it has furnishings in it, but once it's completely vacant, unoccupied and vacant, then we, then, then our timer starts ticking as far as how long we want to insure that. But that's, I don't know, so that came to mind.
Yeah, no, and the only thing I would caution is, we know, we know some of the, this data, we know it's high, right? I mean, that's, that's the point of, of trying to fix this problem and, and it, it does not take into account that we're trying to incentivize and push people to, to fill those vacancies. So if we get data that come back in, say, six months, well, that's without, you know, trying to incentivize their window coverings and any kind of administrative fee or anything like that. So it's, in a way arbitrarily high compared to what we're trying to put in place.
I'd hate to wait six months or two.
Yeah, I don't want to wait six months, sure, but, I mean, just, just as Councilmember Records said, having data to make up to, you know, back up our decisions, I think is an important step forward. And frankly, window coverings are not going to necessarily, you know, cause somebody who's going to be buying the building to say, okay, they have nice window coverings, I want to buy that building.
Can't hurt.
You know, I mean, retro riot, you know, we do have some examples of where there is turnaround and, you know, we can have that information, I think, pretty, pretty quick, in my-
So Laura, any additional questions? Okay, we've not quite agreed on the timeframe, but at least we can get some data from the commercial real estate brokers in town in terms of-
Days on market.
Days on the market, things like that.
And is it just in terms of the appearance, it's only windows, nothing else on the exterior appearance of the building?
Eileen?
Some of the examples I saw required that if windows or doors are boarded up to secure the building from unauthorized entry, that they be compatible with the materials that the, that is on the facade of the building. So you're not going to get just a random piece of plywood put up there. It would have to be compatible with the appearance of the building. I thought, I'd, I'd not seen that before, that one was a bit, I found that one very interesting.
Yeah, the one, the one that I saw was that plywood had to have a paint, one coat of gray paint or a color that was neutral.
And then some of them were a little more detailed about matching-
Is that something that council would want to include in there? Because the, in terms of securing the building from entry, that's already required by the city, by the building code.
Yeah, right. The code covers a lot of it. If the windows are broken and someone could break in, we've already got that covered.
Right.
Anyway, that's just some of the examples I thought, I thought that was an intriguing notion that-
Is that something that the council would like me to include in this draft?
I have a question about that. Who would be responsible for ensuring that that standard is the right standard?
That's actually the, the next question that I was going to ask, because in terms of enforcement, I did get a visit from the Public Works Director today because he read the draft ordinance and where I had indicated, do you want it to be the building official or code enforcement, the police department? And his preference was that it not be the building official that enforced this.
Did Jake come over and talk to you as the commander?
No, he did not.
Maybe he wants to say, I'm pulling out.
Code enforcement, all right. So that, I mean, is that your preference, that you would want this to be enforced by code enforcement?
If Kevin doesn't want to do it, I don't think-
We would be able to enforce it.
It makes sense to me that it would be under code enforcement.
I think so, too.
Yes. Okay.
They have the ticket book and they can do it.
The registration program, so code enforcement would be the ones that would be applying that standard. I, I wouldn't want to see a, or other neutral color. I would want to just, if you want it to be plywood has to be painted a specific color, I would want to specify the color, so there's no question and no ambiguity.
The language would, like I said, the language could be a color compatible with, what is, no.
A color.
Just a color.
We're, we're gonna give them the color pattern.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Round number 21.
The exact text, the color.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
At least we know what the cougar color is now, we've got that one.
I guess I just have one, just one more question.
That's all you get.
Grandfathering is not an issue in any of this. We don't have to-
It would be in, there would be an initial enforcement effort. So if you recall, when you imposed the business registration requirement, there was, I think it was about a six-month period of notice to the property owners. We sent out a letter, or the, to the commercial businesses, sent out a letter to everyone that was registered with the state as having a business in the city and required that, put them on notice that they would need to comply with the commercial business registration ordinance when it went into effect. So is that, do you want a waiting period for it to go into effect? There will have to be some type of ramp-up period to enforce it.
Something fair and reasonable.
So similar to what we did in the commercial business registration? Okay.
What, what is fair and reasonable, three months?
I will have to go back and look at what we did for the commercial business.
I was just trying to move things along.
My recollection is that you adopted the commercial business registration program in like late summer and then it was effective on January 1.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments?
Could I, Laura, can I ask about, so I understand the not having something punitive based on, you know, just the building itself being vacant, that there being an administrative fee, but what, what if there were requirements that they, they apply for something in the, with the city and they don't do that? Just like-
Just like any other punitive action, you know, with the finance attached to it? So you, you have to apply for a license, you don't do it, and so now you do get fined.
Correct. Any, any violation of the city code is subject to the general penalty, it's an infraction, and then there's a classification in Title I in terms of the level of violation. So again, I go back to the landlord registration and the business registration requirements, those have penalties for violating city code and, and not registering. So what happens, it's a code enforcement issue. If we find out that a business isn't registered, then there's a notice letter sent to them, and if they don't comply and register, then it's a notice of infraction, which actually ends up in district court.
Okay, good, because I know we, you know, we recently changed parking tickets, we, you know, the cost of that, I don't know if this was arbitrary, but if you don't shovel your sidewalks, I, you know, I know we have a monetary...
That is, yes, the exact same.
Sure.
Mm-hmm. Any, any violation of city code is a civil infraction, and so it can be that, we then have the code enforcement officers issuing a notice of infraction, and like I said, that, that gets you in district court in front of Judge Hart for failing to comply with the city code.
Any other comments, or any more questions that you have that you haven't...
Am I hearing that you do want a registration program for these vacant buildings and, or is it just a requirement that if your building is vacant for a period of time, you have to have the, so for the approved window dressing or window decals? And, and did I understand you correctly, those window decals would be available from the city?
Yeah. I think that formalizes a little more, keeps tabs on it, it's a reminder for them. I mean, if we have, if we have that in a list of, of those that have applied, it's easy to be in contact with them and send reminders as well. I think we should.
So you already have a business registration requirement, so every, every business and every landlord company is required to register with the city. That's handled through our, through the state business licensing portal?
Would there be a way to change status?
Dan, you had a...
Would that capture buildings that have been vacant for multiple years and don't necessarily have a business operating on it?
No, it, well, it, it may, depending on the company, but otherwise, then we've got property tax records through the county of who the owner is. The problem with that is it's, if there's a mortgage on it, it's often the lien holder that's identified in the tax records as compared to the actual property owner, so it can be hard to find, but that could be part of the, the program is that you require, I mean, that the, that the mortgage companies or lien holder be identified as a responsible person that has to register the building if it's vacant. That's, that's part of the, on the zombie properties, the residential properties that are, are, that have gone into foreclosure and they're held by holding companies, that that's how cities have been addressing those properties.
And you had a comment?
So when you said there, there was already, they already have to register, is there a way to flag vacant, yeah, change the status or flag when they become vacant, somehow identify them within that registry?
I'll have to check with Chief Jenkins about that.
Maybe that would be easy.
Or with Penny Ravis.
Nathan?
I'm just, so I'm hearing this discussion, I'm starting to hear cha-ching, cha-ching as, as we're adding additional things, staffing, decals, all of this stuff, and as, as an entrepreneur, I'm thinking, what's the cost benefit ratio for all of this? So I just want to mention that as we're moving forward with this, as we add additional, you know, so I'm, I'm not saying anything, I will, you know, support the council.
I'm thinking that we should also, before we say 12, we should have an estimate of what these decals cost. Maybe we end up with three, that might be appropriate. I mean, we have, we have to look at that, but this is all part of the investigation, it's all part of the research.
And I think, I think there, I think it was in your draft, your draft ordinance, Laura, that had at the end of it, a report that would come every year, every two years, and I think that could be used as, you know, you know, this first, the first go at this, we may, we may go in with an idea of how much some of these things are going to cost, but then we get to the end of that first reporting period, and then we get back on what are the actual costs to implement this program? And we could use that as justification to adjust those fees as appropriate to actually cover the costs of the program and build that back into the registration fee as kind of a closed-loop system to make sure that this isn't, this isn't taken away from other, other things that the city has to do, but it's also a way to have the businesses have skin in the game.
Now, the discussion, there's been a lot of emphasis on downtown, but we're talking as possible, vacant buildings throughout the community now.
Just downtown.
Are you talking just strictly downtown? Because there are vacant buildings elsewhere.
What are the boundaries that you want it to be?
My recommendation is this, what we, the designated central business district zone. Is that C2?
Which we've already established.
Which we've already established.
So the CBD, the entire downtown zone, the central business district?
That's my initial thought.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think we need to use that as a test model.
Okay. Just want to make sure it's very clear.
Yeah, thank you.
You, I, I know some vacant buildings on Grand Avenue. I can't think of some windows that one particular building has.
The, Nathan mentioned the benefit. If there was not a benefit, hundreds of other communities would not have done this. There is a benefit, a cost benefit to having an attractive downtown. This is where we're headed. I'm kind of reiterating what, what Adam said earlier, is that's the benefit, is having a place that people want to move into and having at least a little bit of assurance that if you move into X storefront, that Y storefront isn't going to be, you know, not compatible with what you signed your lease for to do business in our central business district. That's where the benefit is. It's not a splitting of hairs, is it, how much is a sheet of T-111 cost? That's not, that's not where this is at. It's about the benefit. All these other communities would not have done this unless there was a benefit.
Okay. Laura?
One more thing that I wanted to draw everyone's attention to is the, the inspection. Laura put it out in here about clarifying the inspection component of that, and I think, you know, what I'm hearing from everybody is, is we're talking about the exterior appearance of the, of the building and not necessarily requiring an interior inspection where we'd have to enter the premises. I think we need to have that very, very specific in, in here.
I don't think an interior inspection requirement is enforceable.
I agree.
Yeah, and, and even look at, if you look at the landlord inspection statutes or, or city ordinances that have survived, it is not the local government that's going in and doing the inspection. What they are doing is, is a condition of licensing requiring the property owner to contract and pay for their own private inspection, and then that report is provided to the city. That model works, but in Washington State, you have to have a search warrant to issue a building and for an adminis, or to enter a building, excuse me, for an administrative enforcement, there is actually no court under Washington's constitution that has the authority to issue search warrants, warrants for administrative enforcement purposes. So that's, that was, Seattle lost that challenge, and nothing has changed since. So I, I don't think any interior inspection would ever survive challenge under current Washington law. But the exterior, what you can see from the sidewalk is fair game.
So at this point, have you got your questions answered?
The ones that I can think of, yes, so I'm sure I will have more, but well, it sounds like...
And they'll come back after the first of the year with some...
And it sounds, sounds like we have, I'll need to talk with Adam about who he'll have assigned to do that research in terms of the decals and the costs.
And we might be working with the Arts Commission, too. Yeah. With that, next item is new business, and Brandon, you had an item.
I just wanted to get an update on where we stood with our complete streets ordinance. I heard there might be a draft that was done, so I wanted to hear from somebody on that, and I don't know...
We go to Kevin.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. The draft was finished up earlier this month, and so I've distributed it to some staff members, Deputy Public Works Director Clayton Forsman, City Engineer Kara Haley, Planning Director has a copy of it. So we're doing a staff review and edit session that should be done early in January, and then the plan would be to take it to both the Planning Commission and City Council, probably as a, at least a discussion item, you know, here's the draft, you know, what do you think? Are there places you want us to beef up or tweak? So that's the plan going forward, probably the first quarter is when you would see it next year.
Okay. Nathan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Adam was going to ask me to address some of the questions regarding warming center.
Yeah.
So I wasn't sure if I should wait, but...
No, go right ahead.
Okay. So just an update, as history for anybody who doesn't know it, you know, people watching and so on and so forth, 2017, there was really a discussion that began, 2018, with the help of the city, nonprofits, faith organizations, individual volunteers, donations, and of course, the lead agency of Family Promise, the Pullman Warming Center did open. I, I consider it a success, I already explained that we did help one individual, a veteran, on Christmas Eve. And however, this year, there's been a lot of questions because people are seeing additional homeless. You know, four to six individuals in particular are, are identified by different organizations, faith groups, so on and so forth. And I think that's part my fault, because when we opened the warming center, it, it does spread in circles that, that there was a warming center. However, this year, with Family Promise looking for a new ED, it was beyond the scope that they, they could take on. However, next year, they are planning to move forward with a possibility of a warming center, not sure if it would be here or Moscow, but working with various faith groups. I did want to mention that, you know, there's been some, some individuals going to the hospital or the police station, and, well, the library during, during hours, but this is at night to stay. You know, the hospital is not set up to, to help these individuals beyond medical, and the police station needs to remain a welcome and open environment for everyone. And there's been some challenges recently. I did want to mention that we learned a lot. It wasn't as scary as people thought, it took more organizing than I anticipated, because I'm a bit of a bleeding heart when it comes to those in need. But now we do have the appropriate documents, training materials, and most importantly, support from the community, which includes the city. I want to mention as well, we have found through the Poverty Awareness Task Force and working with Commander Hopkins North, and thank you for taking on the, the task of coming to the Poverty Awareness Task Force, some individuals do choose the lifestyle of being, of camping and being kind of free. And while I understand everybody, including my own, feeling that why would you want to be out in this cold, some people don't, don't want the help that is offered. However, Community Action Center has helped, I know at least one person find housing. We do have the Community Relief Fund that's administered through the Community Action Center, which provides emergency shelter through hotels or bus tickets for individuals. I've talked about this before, I, and I, I want the entire community, the city, to understand that right now we're in a gray area. We have some homeless, we've had the Catholic charities from Spokane come down and discuss with us about funding, and it has to be at a certain level for there to be any actual funding for a warming center, a full-time warming center or cooling shelter. I don't want to see us get, get above that gray area. It will probably come sometime in the future. Lastly, and I'll just close it after this, we have a very giving and welcoming community. I've heard from so many people about starting a warming center, it is not feasible at this point. But I do want to thank all of the organizations and individuals out there who are passionate about this challenge. I believe it's important to be proactive, and Pullman, the city of Pullman, our community really is being proactive rather than reactive in addressing these, these challenges to the best of our ability.
And let's just mention, too, since you mentioned Family Promise, Family Promise is doing a fantastic job between both communities right now, because of the churches that are working together. And I know that the Lannity Saints was taking care of one group, Trinity Lutheran, and they're, they're at Trinity Lutheran this week. I think they took care of like 11 to 12 individuals, they take care of families that are homeless, and this has been just a vital process for both communities, both Moscow and Pullman, and they have a number of the churches that are all working together. So they are addressing some of these needs, especially dealing with families. I just want to make sure, since you mentioned Family Promise, that Family Promise is very active.
They are up and running.
And very grateful to the churches of this, both Moscow and Pullman, for doing this. So is there any other new business to come before the council tonight?
I just have a question.
You can just address the, and then again, you have a three-minute limit.
Hi, I'm Lisa Carla, I live at 1230 Northwest Haven Circle, and I just have some questions about the, the vacant building ordinance that you all were discussing, just things that I don't understand. So the first thing is that when I was reading through that draft, the enforcement part, see, it just seemed to be about registration, right? That there's enforcement will kick in if you fail to register, but what if they don't register? Well, no, what if they do register, but don't do like the, or not in compliance with the building minimum maintenance requirements, which is really, I think, the heart of this, right? We're trying to, to get buildings so that they look nice, as Al was saying, and if you have somebody who goes ahead and registers, but they don't fulfill the, you know, they have peeling paint and they don't have the flashing, is, how does the enforcement kick in? Is that already in city, excuse me, in city code, and does it go there? Or, I just didn't see anything about enforcement beyond registration, which doesn't seem to me to have a whole lot of teeth. Then my second question is, if this ordinance, with the improvements that you all talked about passed, how would that affect the Mimosa Building? I mean, I think that's kind of our gold standard, is whatever we pass, how does it affect the Mimosa Building? Does it give us, as Pullman, any kind of power to take on that lingering albatross that's been around our neck? So that's, that's the other question. I was looking at a different kind of ordinance that Spokane has, it's a vacant building ordinance, which empowers the city, that if they don't do the repairs and the, the building becomes dilapidated, that the city can step in and demolish it. So is a vacant building, a dilapidated building ordinance different from a vacant building? Because I think if it is, then we need to be talking about both of these at the same time so that they work well together, so that there's the issue of filling the building, which is important for having a vibrant downtown, but not all vacant buildings are dilapidated and really, you know, looking terrible and, and tying up resources and tying up our downtown, whereas other buildings have just been vacant forever and nobody seems to care about, I mean, the owners don't seem to care about the effect on town, and become dilapidated and, and have a very different kind of impact, I think, on our vibrancy. So, so those are my, my questions, and I don't know if you can answer them?
There are the three minutes left. So Laura, I'll just turn over to you.
So there were prior city council discussions and presentations about property maintenance requirements, which would address things like peeling paint and the appearance of a, a building, the existing International Building Code, the state building code... The existing International Building Code, the state building code addresses buildings that aren't secure from entry, or if there's some type of, really, it's whether on the exterior of the structure, whether there's something that is causing some type of public health hazard. We were able to address, there were some failing fascia, and we were able to address that through the nuisance code enforcement, and, and did, and got really quick, I want to say within 24 hours, compliance from the property owner when they were notified that that was a violation. But in terms of property maintenance, the, the direction I was given from the council is that they did not want to go down the path of adopting a property maintenance code. There is a uniform property maintenance code that addresses appearance and peeling paint and things like that, and that, that wasn't a direction the council wanted to go. What you're talking about in Spokane, I actually referred to that earlier, the zombie properties, and that has to do with properties that they're not secure from entry, like the, the buildings that I can think of that they have actually gone and leaned the property, one, there's, it's a, it's a lengthy period, there's a number of, of years of enforcement, or 12 months to 18 months of enforcement, there has to be documented police calls due to nuisance activity, drug activity, vibrancy. So, again, that doesn't address the Mimosa. Really, the only thing that would address the Mimosa, in my opinion, and, and what we heard from the building inspector, is the Uniform Property Maintenance Code.
Good, just highlight.
Section 5, in the, in the example, talks about maintenance.
What example?
In the, in the-
The Everett one?
In, in your draft.
Yeah, in the, yeah, that was based on the Everett one.
Right, so it's in there, Lisa.
Oh, right, but where's the enforcement? I mean, it just says you can't have these things, but then-
It becomes part of the city code, am I correct in that?
So, can I clarify, I did not hear from the city council that they wanted to include that maintenance in the draft that they have me working on, do you want me to include that provision?
It's in here.
In, that was a draft that, that was based on the Everett code? So, my, my understanding from tonight's discussion is that I need to draft an entirely new ordinance, based on the direction that I got.
But I heard tonight was, you were going to first tackle the window issue.
Right, which is, is only the windows, not the exterior of the building.
And then later on, you said, piecemeal, you do the next part.
That's my understanding.
Well, gathering data on window treatments was the first thing, but I'd sort of assumed that we would framework it still within this kind of standard model that does include maintenance.
I would not recommend following-
I guess I should not have assumed that.
I don't, I, I, I'm just going to be blunt, I would not recommend following the Everett model, which is, which is the direction I had, which was to provide you with a draft based on the Everett model.
Because you said it's enforceable, and they have not enforced it.
Exactly.
Dan, it looks like you were ready to say something.
Well, I think the, the issue of the maintenance, if we could table that part of it for now, because I think that's a bit of a longer discussion of-
Sure is.
Getting into a lot of specifics there, but I think that's, that's probably ripe for another, another day.
Yeah, step by step.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Is there any other new business to come before the council tonight? Seeing none, this is the last meeting of 2019, we'll be back in 2020, and happy holidays and happy new year to everyone. With that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed, okay.